All those meeting orders, during city council tenet of agenda Monday, September twenty-two, six thirty P M, council chambers, call to order.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda approvals minutes of eight A two thousand twenty-two and special meetings of eight fifteen two thousand twenty-two and eight thirty two thousand twenty-two. Approval of financial statements as of eight thirty-one two thousand twenty-two. Approval of bills that presented, approval of legal license for Mexico Astro, approval of license Stuart Floyd Gibbs, approval of license Stuart Paul one five.
So moved.
Moved by Rensel.
I'll start again.
Sent by Patrick, how do you vote? Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Rensel.
Yes.
Okay. For discussion and process, please take the form and review. Mike Calvo.
So, uh, this is just an extension of the meeting, the joint meeting, when we had that, we discussed, handed out, uh, the form and said, hey, you know, this is an example, take a look at it. We decided that night not to discuss any kind of parameters because it was a busy meeting. Uh, I think everybody at that meeting, I don't know, I could have read it wrong, was kind of looking forward to going forward with that. And, uh, we just need to discuss how we're gonna do it, so. I don't know if anybody had time to think of any ideas on that. I don't, I don't want it to be just, uh, uh, my idea because it can't be just my idea.
No, I, I, I agree with you and I think, um, I think everybody should have a performance evaluation. Um, but I think it'd be good if we just maybe set a date and when they need to be completed. Um, I'd be all for that, I guess.
That could be, that could be everyone.
Yeah.
I don't think it could, it should.
Yeah, every great employee through the city of Stewart. Yes.
And so what I gathered from that discussion that we had is that Ash was going to take the form, hand it to the department heads. If there were specific areas they needed to craft for such, their such department, they would get those revisions back or those comments back and then it would come back to us. I think just in general, for everybody, um, we should have set a timeline, like you said, and maybe say, like October or November, forms need to come back to Ash so they can be put in final form, so evaluations can be done by December or the end of January, maybe, and we start setting some timelines so we have deadlines to meet and we're not just throwing it up in the air.
So, yeah, this is a simple, like, idea, but it gets complicated, like, are people writing their own? Do we approve them or?
I thought the consensus was department heads were gonna do their own.
Right. So, yes, to go over that, as far as what I brought up was a performance review on the city administrator. Nobody else. We do not do performance reviews on anybody else because that is the city administrator's job. We don't wanna do that job. The city council manages the city through the city administrator. We pass stuff, it's up to him to execute the will of the council, that's how we manage it. Okay, so, anybody else, really, that's, that's up to the city administrator to discuss with the department heads, how they wanna do it, you know, if he, they wanna revise forms, they can just bring it to Ash and he could sign off on those revised forms. Okay? We don't need to sign off on, you know, he could sign off on it. My focus was that we need to manage the one employee that actually reports to us and how we manage the city, just to see how things are going, that's what a performance review is. You see what's going good, what could be improved on, you set some standards and you move forward. That's it.
Would, does Ash report to the mayor? Would the mayor sign off on that or would that come here?
We are the ones that, uh, like you said, we execute policy. You know, we, we, uh, uh, take care of that and he manages and executes the will of the council. That's what he does. I don't know if, if we would include the mayor in a performance review, I mean, that would be, that's something that we need to decide. You know, it's, it's, this, the hardest one is the first one because it's never been done before, I mean, I, I don't know, you've been here, what, twenty-eight years, Ash?
Yes.
Thirty, something like that, I don't know, twenty-eight?
Twenty-nine.
I, I don't know if, I don't know, maybe there has been. You would know, Ash, have you ever had a council?
I am letting you finish your presentation. Why, because there's two parts of this conversation.
Okay, okay. So, I don't know if a council's ever done one, you know?
It'd definitely be in joint.
Not necessarily, and I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why, you're talking about utility board, okay? So, if we recall in another, prior to the one where I brought this up, the utility board said they wanna be autonomous from the city council. They wanna be their own separate board, okay? I extended the invitation, hey, do you wanna, do you wanna do this together? We got no feedback from them, absolutely not, unless somebody knows something different, but I was at that meeting and there was no interest. Okay? That's fine. If we say we have to do it jointly and they don't wanna do it, does that mean we can't do it? By no means does that mean we can't do it, you know? We can review it based on what Ash does from the city side, because he may do some different stuff for the, for the utility board side. That would be up to them to review. But we have probably, I would say, the obligation to make sure that the citizens are giving the best return for their investment in it. Again, it's just to find out what's going good, what may not be going so good, develop a plan, let's make it better. Yeah? There's no, and that's not what it, it shouldn't be, but I understand, you know, if you've never had one done, you know, it might be a little nerve-wracking, you know? I have, I have, I bet ninety percent of the people in this room get performance reviews, you know, and I've had some positive feedback from some of the citizens saying, we hope you go through with this, you know?
I like what Cory and, um, Christine are saying too, but I think, I don't think it should be the same date, maybe, I think, just using Jim, for example, Jim should have a performance review of anybody that's below him at this date, a short while later, because those have to take place, I think, and then Ash has to give him a review and then we would have to review Ash, because, I mean, because part of that review should be, are you doing reviews? Are you carrying it? So, I just think that, I don't think it can be the same date.
Right. And I was going with more of just a policy procedure, I was not saying that we do the evaluations because that is absolutely not our job. It's Ash's job to do Cory and Stephen, it's Ash's job to do Jim, it's Dave Reha's job to do the people underneath him, it's Dick's job to do the police chief. What I was saying is we just set a procedure or a policy saying that, you know, department heads have to have their reviews of their employees done by X, Ash has to have department heads' reviews done by X, and that way we just have a timeline so that way we have a deadline to meet, so it's not just thrown in the air.
Sure.
I wasn't saying that we were gonna do them because that is not our job and nor do our.
That's, that's fine, you know, I just, thank you for the clarification. Um, and, and that's fine, you know, and, and I think, you know, they have their forms, if they wanna use the forms to revise them, my thing is how are we going to proceed with, with Ash's review? What parameters we discuss that? Parameters are we going to use to review our city administrator? Are we going to set up a committee to do it? You know, two council members, maybe two people from the, from the public, I don't know. I, I don't know, that's why, um, I'm asking you guys.
Well, I don't think committees are allowed at this point, we're not allowed, but I, I mean, I think just a form, fill it out.
Sit around and ask questions back and forth, make it informal, you know? Like I said, the first one's the hardest, because you can do a first one, and trust me, my review at my place changes all the time on how they, how they do it, you know, the parameters change, you know, here they're, they're scoring us on one to ten and then all of a sudden that's out the window, you know? So, if we sat around, got a baseline figured, I don't know, and then the next one is, is a little bit different, you know, and we, we hash it out, but it's just getting started, so. I'm not the expert here, I'm just, I'm asking.
We need to set up policy or procedure, however you wanna put it on, starting.
Not however I want to, however we want to, don't make it that way.
And, and starting from, oh, I didn't put this on the agenda, so, starting from the bottom and then working our way up. So, if we say, okay, all department heads need to have their evaluations done by thirty-eighth, and then Ash, can you please have department heads' evaluations done by December thirtieth? Once that's complete, council, then can you please have yours done by January thirtieth or however, but we do it, maybe almost a month. Start from the bottom and then work its way up.
Ash, do we, obviously, we, we would have to, do we have, like, a job description?
Yes.
For your position?
For my position, it's in the city code.
Okay, so that's what we have to base his performance evaluation off of, is his job description? So, I think all we need to do is just probably set the date of when we would want this done, and if he's not meeting expectations in his job, then that's something that we, but his job description's already there, so for us to set up and say, we're gonna base it on this and this and the same, but, you know what I mean? It's already in place, so that's, his evaluation should be based off of.
What's, what's been done in the past for, like, uh, department heads reviewing?
Yes. I've done almost a couple.
Yeah, yeah, he's asking you a question, you're right.
I just want you to say what they're gonna say.
No, no, you're fine, he's asking you.
Okay. Thank you, this is very healthy discussion, I wish that had been before asked, but unfortunately today, we're talking about it in a very, very, very professional manner, you know? To answer your question is, I go during the budget time, start evaluation from Mar, from January to March. That evaluation for everybody has to be kept away from a public meeting because all the implementers have a different self-flaw. I can't come here and discuss it, but you're gonna come and look at all the department heads' evaluation. I do it every year, start from January to March. So, I can come and discuss a budget with you and see your direction on increase of wages, because big part of the evaluations to decide how much raise everybody gets, whether you award them or you discipline them, all this stuff, based on the evaluation. That's how it's been working with me. We can do it the same way, if you wanna evaluate, we will be the same timeframe, if you wanna do, you wanna choose any other time, like the healthy discussions going on, that's up to you, but I do it from January to March while I'm discussing the budget with you, because you always know that from January, February, March, I'm working on the budget with you, coming to you, I'm waiting for you to ask me about Jim and about Charlie, about everybody I gave you because I have it in my hand, but I don't put it on the agenda and I don't name names, and that's the second part we're gonna talk about. Let's finish, finish that part, I seen that, I see the direction is the timing, when you wanna do it and all this stuff, that's fine, let's decide now and let's go that side about, because there's other side too I wanna discuss with you.
And, and, and I think that's appropriate, you know, maybe instead of having it in at the end of the year, is doing it when we are talking, you know, because that, you know, that makes more sense.
That's what I mean.
To me, you know, and keep them all.
Those are done from January to March, maybe April.
Yes, because from January to March, everyone will be discussing the budget. So, you are with me and I have the file for me giving you the feedback, the information without having to be discussed in a public meeting. You can do the same with me throughout that time. Is that okay?
So, would that, that would be something where, so, so, okay, so, so say that's the timeframe, but again, what's the process for us to review? Are we doing, are we, are we, like, and I know we got this here, okay, I get, I get we got your job, job description, but are we doing it, are we just, are we writing stuff down and giving it to Ash or are we having, like, a meeting and, and discussing it, kinda like we are here, you know? Let's say, let's say this was your review and it was closed or it was open, however you want it, and we're asking questions, is that how we're gonna do it? But, that's, that's where I'm at, you know, timing, here, there, you know, but it's the process, you know? Uh, you had a form that I, I gave to you to look at, you know, said, this, we could do it this way, we could do it tons of different ways, but I'm looking for the rest of the council to help out with suggestions on the actual procedure to do it, because I don't know. You know, I have my ideas, like I said, I don't mind sitting here talking to, you know, but is that what other people want?
And that's, I guess that's why I asked earlier, who, who does it? Does it council or does the mayor? Because if, if I was sitting in Ash's chair, I would not wanna be sitting right there, like, in front of everybody doing my performance review. I, I don't think that's fair or right, by no means, um, so, but that's the mayor's job to do that privately in Ash's office, say, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna go over this, maybe we bring up, um, concerns that we have to the mayor and he brings it up in the performance evaluation in the private chambers. That's the way I would see it if it was me, I guess.
Wayne, not to put you on the spot, but have you, do you have any insight on what, I don't, I guess, I'm, this is new, all new to me, so I don't know if you have any insight on how other towns may, procedures or, I don't know.
And I'm afraid cities do it different ways.
Right.
Um, some have a personnel committee that the other, kinda like you said, the other members kinda report to the personnel committee and then they meet with the city administrator. Um, some do it altogether, you just need to remember that, uh, of course, anybody being evaluated has the right to go into closed session, that's, that's not a public, uh, public meeting. Um, others do it as just proposed, um, they fill out forms, give it to the mayor, and then the mayor meets with the city administrator, um, so, I, I don't have just one way of doing that.
Right, but I like those options, just to.
Yeah, so you have, you have different options, the big thing is just remember in a public meeting, you never talk about any personnel issues.
And, and also in addition to that, you know, whatever, you know, we'd have to decide, you know, if, if, if there's something that needs to be addressed, you know, what kind of, uh, I suppose, to use slang from work, action plan, who would do that? So, if we gave it to the mayor, would he be responsible for writing an action plan or would that come back here? Uh, how would you do that? Yeah? Now, for me personally, I, I like the idea of the council doing that, then we are all together on an action plan. We could all decide, yes, no, whatever, um, but that's just me, so, again, like I said, I'm open to ideas, I'd like to hear people's thoughts on this, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
No, I kinda like the mayor thing, filling out forms and giving it to the mayor, if you don't mind there, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine. I mean, I guess I have more contact than any council person.
Right.
With Ash, day in and day out.
But we're filling out the forms and then they give them to you.
So, then we'd have to develop a form now to be able to fill out on that.
Is that right?
I mean, we have to.
You give us a form, I have forms that I use. Every form, as long as we're all agreeing on the pass.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to get at, you're, you're right, that's, I, I just want to, to state if we're going to, and, and I'm not opposed to, to mayor.
I just wanted to show him that there was a hand when Mike was done.
You wanna come up to Mike?
Sure.
So, we can hear you.
Uh, just throwing out my perspective from beyond the school board, I feel like it relates a lot to the evaluation of the superintendents, and so, through the school board evaluation, there was a form with ratings and it was like, you decided, you know, one through five or one through six rating, and it's like, needs improvement, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, basically, or you have the option to do any, because there's likely that not everyone would have a chance to evaluate every single competency.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, and so, um, and then as a board, we had decided, does every individual fill it out or as a group do you fill it out? And then basically it becomes like if each individual fills it out, it was a consensus of here's the rating and then additional commentary and then go into a closed session and basically go through, here's the feedback, here's what we have, the opportunity for the superintendent, you know, school, the same thing, to, um, ask questions about how do we write it? Why didn't we give them that rating? And then, um, the compensation as far as impacts of, you know, like, the plan or something, is a completely separate conversation from what's going into the evaluation, yeah, plays into it, but they're not in our angle just because sometimes those things can escalate, I guess, as far as when you go through those things, they'll try and give them a separate conversations, we always did, but, yeah, just perspective of being on the school board, but I thought that was a, it's a, it's a process that's well established amongst a lot of schools.
Right, and you said you would do it individually, fill out a form individually and then compile that and come up with a?
That's what we chose to do. So, we had the option, as, as a school board, we said, we can fit in a room and we can do it, or we can each take it home and we can fill it out ourselves, and that's what we chose to do, we chose to each individually fill it out, so that way everybody got to express their own opinions, because some people are like, you know what, they're doing awesome in this area, and somebody else is like, I don't see it that way, and so, and then basically the rating was a combined rating form.
Thank you.
Just thought.
Thank you very much.
So, so, um, I know it's, it's, it's more complicated than, uh, I think anybody thought, you know, it's not just something you come up and fly through, uh, on there, um, so, I don't know if we, I, I am not saying we have to decide tonight on how to do it, okay?
I see, I see what you need to be done.
Okay.
So, we go, can I put that issue behind us? Because there's about two to that issue we can discuss. So, let's decide, let's move on with that evaluation. I evaluate all the influence from January to March. If you would like the mayor to collect all the applications, all, all the forms from everybody individually, that's fine. If you would like to meet with me or discuss it with me, that's fine. Evaluation, evaluation is, it has to be two parts, the council and myself, to understand what you need from me so I can go do, or what you say that I'm doing right or wrong so I can respond. So, I don't think it's something that we need to struggle, it's something that we need to decide and move on. You would like the mayor to collect that evaluation sheet from everyone? That can be had.
That the council has it. Okay, that's just my perspective, again, it's not my will, it's.
What would be different from filling out the forms and giving it to the mayor than what you have in mind? We're still evaluating and we're just giving it to the mayor to compile.
You wanna say that, James?
I, I think Mike's one of the, the dialogue as a group, but.
You're exactly right, you know, because when you're sitting here and you're, you can get the clarification, if there needs to be clarification, hey, you know, what's going on with this, and you tell us right away, then, everybody knows, at the same time, there's no mistaking any kind of questions or anything like that, it's all, it, it's back and forth, it's back and forth, it'd be like my, my evaluation at work, you know, my boss doesn't write something and then give it to somebody else, you know, they write it up and they sit down and you, you go back and forth and talk about it, that's personal, but, again.
How would we go about doing that? I mean, just, just pick a separate night or like go the same night as a regular?
You know what, I, I thought about that too, I don't know if it'd be on a regular night, because, you know, looking at tonight, you know, this is running a little bit long, um, I don't know if you'd wanna, uh, keep it going or, or set a separate one, you know, it'd still have to be posted because if it goes into closed session, people still might wanna turn up to the air after the closed session, I don't know, I, I believe that's right, you know?
So, you, you refer to a closed session tonight?
No, 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 we.
If I am around and you're gonna discuss my performance, I don't want closed session, I'm telling you now, that now, okay? So, we don't have to worry about that closed session, transparency is good. People need to know what I do, need to know what you do. See what I mean? So, we, it's about, why are we going to close session?
It's, it's an option and I, and I appreciate you saying that, so, so.
So, that's not really something that we have to worry about, you know? If I am doing something, it needs to be in group, I want to hear it, the public needs to hear it. If I have concern about during evaluation, the public needs to hear it, because it's not just one part, it's a squad.
Right.
So, you can have evaluation sheet, bring it and we can all sit, but I need to look at it before we discuss it, so I can give it to you, because you told the timesheet and you talked your time to it, I need to take my time to look at it, so when we sit and discuss it, we're all in, do you think that's right? Or that's taken away rights from me?
I, I don't mind.
You know, I, I, again, like I said, I've given you my ideas, uh, I'd like to hear the rest of them and if we wanna settle on something, thanks. I'm, I'm ready to.
So, city codes probably dated, right? How relevant is it, is it to what you do now, I'll be asking, there's more that I do than what the city code does, but we can always discuss, okay, because of the government, the organization, all this stuff, but what you have in the city code, I hold about five, six positions, I'm city administrator, city clerk, city treasurer, territory treasurer, utility secretary of all, so that's why, that's why it's a little bit hard to see, so the code, seeing what the positions of each one, you know? We can discuss that, we can discuss what I do more or less, I think it's, it's a healthy discussion, it's not, it's good. I respect that, I'm really highly respecting that, that I have at the end of my life, I'm, I'm loving age, I can't deny that, I'm gonna be evaluating, that's good, I've been here for twenty nineteen, that's good, I'm happy, I'm happy to see that, that's awesome, I'm happy to be sitting with you discussing my performance, you know, that's great, there's stuff that you, that I do, what we don't know about, and maybe I'll bring it up to you, maybe I'll make you aware of it, so it's a healthy thing to do, let's not try to make it any hard or anything, you wanna go ahead and give your proposal, Jim is gonna, what did you do, your code, and everybody has a lot of respect, so we don't rely on you, but tell us how you wanna handle it, ready?
Uh, no, I, I think this was, um, um, very productive, um, I, I don't know, I, I guess, in, in my opinion, um, I, I see, I'm on the fence, I see both sides of having the council do it, but I also see, um, the mayor doing it as well, just because it's like the mayor said, he's around Ash every day, I'm not, yeah, I do have my nose, if I have a question for Ash or wanna know what's going on in the city, I'll call and ask, I don't know what Ash does every day, I have my own job, I don't, I don't know, that's why I'm saying the mayor should probably be the one doing that, because my boss is around me all the time, so he does mine, it's not somebody that's not around me all the time.
But I do like Mike's discussion of asking questions back and forth.
Sure, sure.
And, and to add on to that, if we don't know what Ash does, why wouldn't we want to?
Sure.
You know, I mean, I don't know everything he does either, and we, no disrespect to the mayor, but if we turn it over to the mayor, then we still really don't know, we may have questions and we may, we may say something that Ash connects says, well, this is, okay, well, that makes sense.
So, my thought on the mayor doing it wasn't that the mayor do the evaluation, it was that we fill out the form, like we fill out the form and we hand it to the mayor.
On behalf of the council.
And then he can have those discussions with Ash.
Yes, I think I understand you too, that everyone will have their evaluation sheet, give it to the mayor and the mayor come and discuss it with me.
That's why I'm saying the mayor should probably be the one doing that. Because my boss is around me all the time, so he does mine. It's not somebody that's not around me all the time.
But I do like Mike's discussion of asking questions back and forth.
Sure, sure.
And to add on to that, if we don't know what Ash does, why wouldn't we want to?
Sure.
You know, I mean, I don't know everything he does either. We, no disrespect to the mayor, but if we turn it over to the mayor, then we still really don't know. We may have questions and we may, we may say something that Ash connects, says, well, this is, okay. Well, that makes sense.
So my thought on the mayor doing it wasn't that the mayor do the evaluation. It was that we fill out the form, like we fill out the form and we hand it to the mayor. And then he can have those discussions with Ash.
Yes. I think I understand you too, that everyone will have the evaluation sheet. Give it to the mayor and the mayor come and discuss it with me. If we need to go further, the council needs me to discuss it with them. I would do with the evaluation that I have. It's, it's me, the job requirement, not me, the job requirement, it's his, the job requirement. Anyone doesn't need the job requirement, I sit and talk to him for long. The same here. If one few or two, the majority, since there's areas that I don't need the job requirement, I can come and sit and talk and see what kind of group.
And you would be talking as a full council, right?
Absolutely. I would say that's the one in the full council, you know, from the, this is what I'm doing.
Right.
Okay, so I understand that you want everybody to fill out the sheet, give it to the mayor.
If there was concerns that then we could talk about it as a council, like, let's say I fill it out and I do have a concern, then we discuss it. But if there's not any major concerns, what's the point of having?
I'm, I'm just, like I said, I'm just giving you my feeling on it and it's gotta be the will of the council, kind of how we wanna go forward.
We need a motion on that, Ash.
Something.
There you go.
Need a motion.
And we could, like we, I don't remember who mentioned it, we can, this isn't like set in stone and we, we're gonna learn.
It was changed, you know, it was changed.
You want me to make a motion? You know what you're doing now?
Yes, well, somebody can make much, I don't care.
Maybe, okay, I'll just throw something out since it's kinda getting pointed here. Uh, and you said you do yours from January to March?
Yes.
So April?
Yes.
The council fills out a form by the April, before the April council meeting, gives it to the mayor. And then the mayor can take it from there and have that discussion with Ash.
Yes, and it can go back to the council for, for some.
For Ash and I, I, I don't know. I'm just.
So you said we do a form by the April meeting?
We need to have the form, whatever form it may be, we need to have it filled out and returned to the mayor before the April council meeting. That was my.
Wait a second.
I'll send it out. But in, we're, we're agreeing on, we, we'll have to agree on some kind of form.
Correct, yeah. I don't have, if I'm not saying this is a certain format.
There is a form that, uh, it's.
Yeah, usually.
Make sure it's A four.
You wanna use that form that?
I, I have it all in my office.
Okay, I think, I think each one got a copy when I sent it out for the, uh, thing, so.
Okay, move in second. So how do you vote? Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan? Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Okay, now, Ash, you have, I don't know, Duane, do you have anything to say or not?
I, I just wanna move on. I believe discussion one, and I'm glad we got this healthy discussion and had a global discussion. Just something that I wanna, I don't wanna start any argument with you, council member, my father, or any blame or anything. I just want you to know what I feel. Because I shared that with the utility chairman and with the, and with the city attorney. I couldn't share it with you as a council members individually because of what this was. I have to share it with the whole, full council. This is the language for the August meeting. Okay, improve performance review, city administrator, possible closed sessions under code section twenty one point five C. This is a long code and you probably know by now, correct? And then my thing that I wanna really share with you might without any hard reasons. If I put on the agenda, say, input in council member, my car slash audit slash code. How do you feel?
I'd be concerned.
I'd be concerned. I, I wanna.
I'm sorry. I was disappointed because of, we work here on our reputation. I worked for the mayor for twenty nine years. Being already, yes. Being given the highest honor that anyone can give in a building. Trying to do the best to give the town feeling inside me that I, I don't deserve for my reputation to be in a public meeting at the, in the river, but when people eat that, they let us sleep. What is, what did he do? To deserve that. He had to use my name.
I can see your point of view, yes.
Okay, so I suffered a lot of damage over your action. I don't know what my sub is reading me right now. That's why I consulted with the mayor, consulted with the utility chairman and the city attorney. And I was advised to let that city attorney talk about it, let him know, maybe he can give different guidance towards what we can do in the future. I'm here to protect the city, so are you, from any harm. I don't think I'll be starting harming the city.
Right.
You see what I mean?
Sure.
And I don't think you wanna do the same, you know, because we're both here to work for the best interest of the town. We can agree and disagree in certain points and this is one of them. You know, that we have this, big disagreement. I don't wanna let it go like that without getting guidance of how the future's hoping for us. Today we're getting along and we're doing good and everything's going fine. I can't, he tomorrow will be mad at me for personal reasons and stuff. No, I, I, I'm not trying to be funny, even trying to be consistent, you know? Maybe I'll be mad at you and got an agenda item like that, like what I just told, you know, you came and told me when was the last time you evaluated. I might respond to who was the last time you been ordered. I've been ordered. So we're going in two directions that we don't wanna go soon because we're supposed to be one body. I want to protect the council by leaving recommendation and you want to protect the town. This is all I have to say, like no more notes, okay? I was advised to bring the city. All of all these things. I didn't wanna hold it back. I didn't get an actual, no, that's no, because that's not me. Twenty nine years, that's enough for me to care about the town. I'm running up in age. Yes, I'm getting close to retire. I don't know when, I can announce it. But I will never ever do the same for the same. See what I mean? No, even if we disagree, even if you are high, don't see I try, that's fine. But we still gotta get along, we still gotta get guidance to allow us in the future, we don't go slow there.
Right.
So if you don't mind, I'm gonna invite Duane, our city attorney.
Before I say, Ash, can I say something?
Yes, please, mind.
If I say something?
No.
Okay, and, and I understand your feeling on that, Ash, I really do, I really do. And that wasn't my intention was not to embarrass you, not to, not to put you on the spot. Um, you agree that I'm the volunteer councilman that got elected, right? I'm not a professional councilman, right?
Yeah.
I'm not an attorney, correct? So I know all the legal stuff that goes on there. In fact, I did something that I usually don't do. I copy and paste and I copied and pasted that. And I don't know how to naturally put stuff on an agenda to make sense.
Yeah.
My intent on that was to start the discussion as we're having tonight, okay? Cause that's what we talked about. We're gonna discuss the parameters, you know? If we had the discussion where the parameters were set and we wanted to move forward, then I thought, well, we have the closed meeting. I fully expect when people say, no, we need to have it some other time. It was not meant to embarrass you. It was definitely not meant to cause you any concern, although it did, okay? You said you felt bad, you did this, you had to reach out here. I really wish maybe you had reached out to me and say, what, what is this about? Prior to the meeting. And, and I could've said, I could've told you exactly what I'm telling you now, prior to that, you know? And maybe we could've saved it off, you know? So I do take responsibility. I put it on there, not the best way. I didn't do my research on the code, but I would hope too that, you know, you can see my point that why not reach out to me and say, what is this about? Cause I'm gonna tell you. I think we've had enough conversations where we've been very candid with each other and we don't really hold a whole lot back, you know? We do it in respect for them or like.
Yes, but I never really has any different opinions of that, never.
So, but I appreciate having, having our attorney here and yeah, guidance on that, I don't, you know, like say, I don't know, so.
Okay, got it, Duane.
Sure, thank you.
Well, first of all, I really appreciate the way everyone handled the discussion tonight. I thought it went as well as it possibly could've gone. Uh, my question goes back into the beginning a little bit more of how you folks are setting your agenda. Okay, I guess that's where we need to start. Now, it's absolutely fine for the council members, if you have an issue, to come in and express what you would like to see on, on your council agenda. However, the final say so on that needs to be the mayor. Uh, this is the mayor, you set the agenda and you run this meeting. So anything that goes on the agenda, it would be my recommendation that the mayor needs to see it first. Also, the city administrator, as, as the, the head employee of the city, uh, normally also works on that agenda. So anything that you're gonna put on there, you know, he should certainly know about and see that as well. Um, other cities that I represent, also, once they put their agenda together, they actually send it to us first. So that we can look at those code sections, um, and correct that ahead of time, um, before it ever gets onto the agenda. So I, I would just make those recommendations to everyone on the council. Hey, if you guys have an issue, that's absolutely correct for you guys to bring it to the mayor and the city administrator if you wanted to address, uh, at a meeting. It's just that I, I think that all needs to happen ahead of time to be reviewed before that agenda goes out. Does that make sense?
No, that's, that's a really good advice there, you know?
You have any other thoughts on that?
Can I say something? Uh, can we let our agenda before it's out, can we send it to our attorney? I like that thought.
I agree.
To be able to send it to Duane or Mitch, whoever wants to review that, just we can go.
We are going to do that for now, yes.
Plus, I also think, and I've, I've said it time and time again, if there, if there's something on the agenda, there needs to be some supporting documentation. We can't just be, I, I don't like throwing stuff on agenda without something, you know, a piece of paper explaining something. Because then we're left all weekend to be like, oh, what could this mean? You have a supporting piece of paper, it needs to go with the packet and not A, be handed out the night of or just have nothing. That's just something I would like.
We'll make sure it's supportive material, we'll try.
Sometimes it's hard, but it's, it's nice to be able to see.
Any other questions for Duane?
No, thank you, Duane.
No, I appreciate it very much. It would be make sense.
Okay, fire. Sports complex, Jessica Wolf and Randy Coyle?
Is it called the?
It is.
Hi, we'll try to keep this to my brain. So, um, really what we're doing is, um, I've been on the soccer board for a little while, but taking on a new role as the board president. And Jessica's new to the board and so, um, we just have some things that we would like to see as improvements and so right, um, it should be in the packet, everything that we're gonna talk about, but really some things that we'd like to see as improvements to the complex. Um, not looking for any decisions today, but really that way we can just start the conversation. It's already, is, you know, yeah, is there a budget? Is there some funding that we can do? Are there some of these things that can be done? That way we can continue to improve the complex, so. Um, just to start, so, um, our recreational soccer room, it has been in place for many years, ever since I was little. Um, but we currently have two hundred, actually it's two hundred and twenty four kids this season, so we have a really large presence, um, within our community. Plus we have individuals from the ADRK to the greenfield schools, um, and maybe a few others that come to our, to our field supply. And so really a lot of this stuff is just making sure that the presence that we have and for those other towns that are coming to play, that they're not seeing a facility this run. So that's what we're thinking about. So, um, the first thing is just rock for the parking lot. So we have a lot of spots that are consistently huge potholes when you're pulling in there. I mean, I feel like somebody's gonna end up rubbing the bottom of their car with this. So just looking at if we can have a little bit more maintenance on the, um, main driveway where people are, so they're not hitting those potholes when they're going through.
Can I ask one quick question? Have you discussed any of this with Jim Henderson?
We have a, some at least happened, yes. A few things, um, yes.
Trying to.
Not sure as far as, yeah, like I said, I'm not looking for any decisions really. This is just, here's things that we would want. And if we can look at, is there budget to do it, is there not? That way maybe, you know, next week, month, whatever, if you guys can give back this, then let us know. Hey, this is feasible, this is not feasible. That way we just understand.
I would, I would just say, I appreciate you bringing this to the council. Because this is where that decision will be made, okay? And I think bringing it to the council, if the council makes a decision, then we hand it over to Ash and Ash takes care of it. You know, that way we're not getting any lines crossed. It's all clear. Everybody knows what's going on. So I believe that this is the best procedure to handle it, so.
Okay, so the second thing is, uh, the fence. And as the soccer program has continued to grow, our need for additional field space has grown as well. We're currently utilizing field space in the baseball field, but it directly beside the soccer fields. We would like to remove the chain link fence on the north side of the field for easier access. Right now, there's just two openings. People have to walk around, cars are going by. You know, as older individuals come down, they're having to walk quite a ways. So we would like to remove that fence so it's easier access. Um, next thing is bathrooms. So we do wanna thank very much, um, Jim, I believe, and I don't know who else helped with getting the bathrooms open. So this is the first time that the bathrooms have been opened in years, which is awesome because we've been using porta potties. And again, we have in towns come in, having one porta potty for a D is not a great thing, so.
So is it the bathrooms over by the soccer field or both the bathrooms?
Right by the soccer.
Just the ones right by, and they're open, they, you know, if I went to let them out, they open or?
Well, that, that's, that's a second number list. So we, we were advised to lock and unlock the bathrooms every single day, which you can tell. As a soccer, um, board, we are all completely volunteers like you are, but, um, on top of that, we're taking on, you know, the position of boards and parents and coaching and multiple of us are doing multiple things. And so, um, just wondering as far as, I mean, we were told that it is the expectation of the soccer club to lock and unlock them and just wondering how are like the city parks done? Would it not work the same way? Is there something else that we can do? The other thing is like for people that are using the walking trails and stuff, if we take away the porta potties, there will not be a bathroom facility open unless those bathrooms are open. But I don't know how that would work because we're only opening it in the evening for soccer. So again, not necessarily something that we need to answer on, but just something to think about, about what would be the best use for those bathrooms. At this point, we're opening them just when there's like soccer practice. So we go up there, go four, open it, lock it after the last practice at seven. So on the weekends, it's not open, it's not open during the day and we are doing that as a board.
Barb, if you happen to know how the city parks, I don't know if anyone has.
To do what? For the city park?
They open twenty-four seven.
I would not suggest having the, the sports complex, I would not suggest having that, those restrooms open all the time because it's, there's no light, lighting out there. It's very dark out there. I was playing in restrooms at ten o'clock at night. It's very dark. There's lots of people out there. There's lots of vandalism. I would not suggest leaving that open twenty-four seven. I would not.
Barb, the, the ones at the park are open.
They are, yes, there's a light out there, there's a.
Right, right, I agree.
There's a camera out there.
There's a camera, there's a camera. But playing the other side of that, who would open them? I mean, we don't have city employees that go or work at night besides our cops. So are we gonna add another thing to our cops? I mean, that's, we, there's.
Well, one thing they have to do is fix the restrooms so the plumbing is on the backside. Right now, they can get vandalized out here because the plumbing's inside. You got brick walls at the park, they can't get to the fixtures. You got your stainless steel toilets and they're indestructible. You have stainless steel toilets at the soccer complex, but the plumbing's there. And again, we need to increase the budgets to fix these facilities so they're more like the park's restroom.
Right, and I agree because they, they're, they're public restrooms, right? You know, they're really, in, in a perfect place, they should be open all the time. And I think you got some stuff farther down that talks about lighting and I know we've discussed lighting up here before. And possibly once that happens, then they can be open twenty-four.
Are we gonna start charging people to begin using our fields? I don't understand where all the money's gonna come for all, I mean.
Yeah, I see, and that's, that's very good. I don't know how it's done right now.
Who's gonna monitor those restrooms every single day? Like I go to the city park every day and check on that restroom. Who's going to the city park? Is that gonna be increased in a budget? Or that's why I really suggested having a, if you have a soccer practice, the soccer coach unlock it and then they lock them back up. It's two keys. They're right there. So that's why I suggested that.
Addressing that walking trail water where people don't have access to restroom. And that's why I'm saying, I've talked to Chip, I've talked to Ash, we need to increase our budget.
But where's the money gonna come from? I don't understand where all this money's gonna come from. Anyways, I have a, I, I have a something on that, but go ahead and continue.
Okay, so next up is lights. Um, for approximately five years, the soccer club has requested that lights be added to the parking lot to help with vandals and other problems. There are old lights sitting in the parking lot and these lights are. There are old lights sitting in the parking lot, can these lights or others be put up at the complex?
Dusty and Jim have already designated where they're gonna be, and hopefully, the city can set the pedestals and the utilities can run the electric lines too.
Um, the other piece of that is the electricity, so we are informed that the panel and concession stand is not in good working order, would need replaced. So we didn't know if that's something that can be done, or exactly what the impacts of that, but basically, without the power, I'm not sure what else would be impacted by that panel not working. I'm not really sure, but I just know that that's something else, I were looking at the bathrooms, we were also informed that the panel isn't working, and that. It was basically said that soccer, the soccer group would have to do it, which I understand that we're using it.
For the panel? You guys were told that you had to do that?
Uh, that we would need to take care of getting it done if needed, yes.
But it's a city building, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Can we just keep going so we get through it, because there's.
Thanks for the highway for fields, we would like to request that a sign be located at the corner of Los Altos to direct individuals from out of town to where the facilities are. We set up at Four Corners, we collected donations a while back, had probably ten people stop by and say, can you point us to the field? We have no idea where we're going, so, just a sign that would locate where the fields are.
Um, drinking fountain, I actually think that this one was fixed, so the drinking fountain had not been operational for many years. Um, I saw some kids getting water a couple days ago, so I just wanted, I don't know if it's fixed, fixed, or what happened, but, I mean, there was water, but, yeah. If we could just get confirmation, it's good, it'll be working, that's right, because, I mean, when it's hot out in the kids, I mean, little kids, they spill their water and stuff, and so it's, it's hard when they don't have something to drink.
Um, next up, that's holes by the large field, there are several large holes located on the north side of the old football field. These are hazardous to cars and people, can this be filled to reduce the risk of someone being injured? A year ago, we had our games out there and watched cars bottom out in these holes that were massive, and in front of them, strike cars around them, it's a liability. Oh, and then the landscape around the rock, the Wolf family would like to landscape around the large memorial rock out of the complex. We'd like to know if that would be okay, we were thinking about doing some landscaping, brick, putting some plants and flowers in, and then potentially, maybe a flag pole where we could fly the rec soccer flag on there, because it's a soccer field. Um, but we wanted to make sure that would be okay with you guys before we did anything.
Um, and then next one is trees, so a majority of the trees out of the complex are the ash trees, so they're diseased and that need to be taken down. So, just wondering if we can, not asking for funding for that, so, through Iowa DNR, Iowa actually already ordered trees that either can go there or somewhere else. They're just seedlings, so they're only about six foot tall, I planted them in my yard, but just wondering if that we can plant out there, if that's okay? So that way, we can actually have some trees out there, since we'll have to cut down everything that's already out there, so.
So, you said you, you have to cut it down, but.
No, no.
Oh, I, okay, you just talked, okay.
Sorry, yes, yes. No, they'll need to be cut down, I mean, they're, they're all, they're all done.
Isn't this something that Jim's been working, or like all of them have been working on through the winter, they cut them down?
So I'm not asking about the trees, I'm asking if it's okay if we plant that, if we plant new trees, that way they can start growing.
And like we said, this was just a list, we realized that it's not all gonna get done tomorrow, we just wanted, we're coming here, we wanted to put everything we had down, so we made you guys aware.
Yep.
I, I think it's a good list, I know a lot of cities, you know, gives enough funding to their complexes to make them desirable for. Because that ultimately does help the town in the long run, when you have a lot of people there. You know, there's a couple items on here where I don't see why we couldn't give them the okay to do, for sure, like plant the trees, do the landscape. I think it'd be okay, if, you know, and I don't know, I am okay with them taking down the fences, they need the, if they need the.
Hold the line, hold the line.
Yeah.
The fence, we, there was a big uproar when they tried to make that field a dog park. And I think there needs to be more discussion on that, because I think there's more things going on out there than. Than just soccer, I mean, we've got slow pitch going on, we've got dodgeball, we've got T-ball, and I think they're trying to start a new league. Yeah, we've got a ton of stuff going on, so I think the fence needs to be given more consideration and talked to more people, because.
And that's why, why, we were just wanting to set things up.
The last time we tried to make a decision on that, it went crazy, so.
So scratch the fence off for, for right now, for just right now.
For right now. Yeah.
But I think the rest of the list, we could almost just give to Ash and say, delegate this out. Ash, could you talk to Pat, maybe tomorrow, see if they could fix that electrical panel out there, or see what we need to do with that?
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, you guys have two hundred and twenty kids, roughly sixty dollars a kid, where does your guys' funds go, besides refs and unit ones?
So, we are completely nonprofit, I will say, we actually lose money every year over here. So, the field maintenance, so we do get some money from C, but other than that, the rec club takes care of the field maintenance as far as like the spraying and things like that that it goes to.
So you guys pay for spraying, C pays for mowing?
They, yes, they pay for mowing, we pay for some of the, and like some of the fertilization and stuff like that, so we pay for some of that. Historically, we have paid for the porta potties, so, and that, that's a hundred and sixty dollars a month that we were paying for that, so that's the money.
I mean, roughly estimate two hundred and twenty. Season, and you have two seasons, right?
Yep, and so, we have to pay Iowa Soccer, so part of what we collect goes straight to Iowa Soccer, because they cover, as far as, since we're part of their organization, they cover the scheduling of the games, they cover like the insurance of the players. And I don't know what else it is, and then when we collect the funds, it's also jerseys, we make no money off the jerseys, we charge completely what we get paid for it, so. Yeah, I mean, we can always, okay, nonprofit, just let's treasure it up, we can give you our financials, that way you can see the breakdown of what it is, but.
I just didn't know, maybe there was something like specifically for the soccer fields, that there's some of these things that maybe, you know, it could be a joint ever. Or because, is the field in the city name, or is it? Because I just don't know how we're gonna come up with all this money to start redoing bathrooms, and now we're gonna be asking our cops to lock the bathrooms up, because we have nobody else on at night, if we, if we think we need them open.
Well, not every kid is sixty dollars, I mean, it's tiered, and we also have a financial aid program, so like families submit, and says they need financial aid, have to, you know, I think we had sixteen percent share where we laid the cost of that. So we didn't get that money for those families, so we're out that money.
Right, I was just, I'm trying to think of ways that we can jointly come together and raise money, besides just saying.
Yes.
Say, put your pocketbook out and let's try to figure it out.
I mean, we're completely, that's why last year, we did the fundraiser at the Four Corners, that way we can fix up one of the sheds there to use. I mean, that's why, we don't have additional money in our budget, I guess, and so we are, those additional fundraising things we're doing to fix up, so.
So you've actually been doing some stuff to help out instead of the city.
Yeah.
Doing everything already, which is something that I look at when somebody comes up and asks for something. If you're actively participating and doing something, it makes it easier, at least for me, to say, why, why don't we look at them? You know, we got, we got Ash, he's good with that, you know? It's, it's not something that tomorrow, we're gonna be jumping in and doing everything, of course.
Oh, yeah.
But again, I said, you know, you go to some other towns, you look at their complexes, they are well maintained, because they know that's where most people live, you know? And not only do they just pay money to you guys, but generally, they spend some money at some restaurants, hopefully, you know, and they're doing other things. So it is a benefit to the city to have that in good working order and presentable and a place where people wanna come, so.
Ash, can we ask that you take this list and meet with Pat Hallie and Jim, and maybe the mayor, and James, since he's on the parks and rec, and maybe we can come up with a, a plan? And maybe look at some budget things, and then we can go from there, is that okay with you, if we can?
Good idea.
Yeah, that's kind of what we have.
James, are you on the soccer board?
Yep.
You guys can come up with a plan, instead of us trying to figure it out tonight?
And it's a good idea, because we, there's an agenda I think that the mayor's gonna talk about.
Right.
So that might be combining, because we're gonna get money for different issues, we can combine those in that same issue.
But maybe between you three and Pat and Jim, come up with a game plan and present it?
Yes.
Is that okay? I mean, is that okay with everybody else, maybe coming up with a game plan and?
I would, if, if I could, I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out there, because again, I think we could give them the okay on this. I'd like to make a motion that we allow them to do nine and ten on their list, which is the landscaping and the tree planting.
The tree planting, I think, also, I mean, can you guys come up with, Jim and come up with a mutual spot with, yeah, just location wise?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, and basically, what I would assume that we do is where there's existing tree lines, is where we would like to do, so that way it's not.
Maybe submit something to, to Ash, you know, on that, and then he can.
I don't know whether, when they take out the other ones.
Let's see, that's kind of what I thought, if you cut something that way, or.
I hate for them to be in.
Well, they're decently small, I mean, it's not, I mean, I'm not gonna say that they're my height, but they're not like giant trees that are gonna topple everything.
I think between you guys and her, you guys can probably figure it out, since Jim is our public director.
Christine, can I bring up about the trees? I had asked Jim about doing memory trees, like example, I've been on the board for thirty years, Todd Roman, Jim, we are still living, we wanted to do memory trees, do a plaque. He says, I don't know if we're replacing trees. That's something that, I don't know what the reasoning, I didn't get into it with him, but that, I think, needs to be considered for what, what the explanation wants.
If we, if we.
So the conversation he needs to be having.
If we authorize them to put a tree in there, and they work through Ash, then they can put a tree in there.
So are we just disregarding Jim's place in the city? He is the public works director, he does have a say in this.
First of all, they shouldn't go directly to him, okay? They should always work with City Hall, and then go through the proper channels, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so my motion was to have Ash and Dick, well, I was before you, to have Ash and Dick and James, and.
So I'll kill them. Oh, well, come on now, that's.
Jim and Pat go over the list and come up with a game plan on how we're gonna fund this stuff and how we're gonna do things. I will add to the motion that we go ahead and allow number nine, but that number ten gets discussed with Jim. And if there's still some issues, we can come back and talk about it, but I think Jim also has a say in this.
But I highly recommend the trees, you're out in the soccer field, you enjoy the shade.
Right, and I'm not saying no, because I like the shade, I'm just saying, I think he needs to be brought into the conversation, he's not here to have a say, so.
Do we have a second?
I think that between the five of them, they can work it out.
Motion died. Five, you got motion?
Yeah, allow landscaping to then.
And, and I'll add to that, you know, they need to work with you, Ash, and Jim on the planting of the trees. But I think the proper procedure is to work with you, and then it passes down. There's no way, we're not saying he could not have a discussion, it's just we need to follow it, and I'm sure you would bring him in on it, and then they can get together, okay, on that.
Yeah, we can just submit a plan that shows where we wanna plant the trees.
So do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Patrick, how do you?
It is.
Nothing.
How do you vote, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan? Patrick?
Yes.
Redlow?
Yes.
How about?
Yes.
And one other thing on the list that Randy and Jessica hadn't put on was the chain link posts. Football field's been there ever since we took the facility from the school, those posts need pulled out.
That would be personally a post, yep, yep.
Say that again, where?
Where the old fence was, where you, the audiences watching football fields, the posts are there, the chain link fence isn't.
Some on the north side?
Yeah, the posts are still there, they need pulled out.
Out on the north side, and you had chain link fence on there, okay. Okay.
So just one more note, just on this, I think Matt, your Matt thought great?
Yes.
Okay, so just something, possibly look at, working with you on grants, I know we're talking about funding, but other things, since we're nonprofit, that maybe we could work out and make some grant funding too, for some other things, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about, there's also a steering, sorry, community envisioning, community committees that we're gonna be working with Iowa City University, would you like to be a part of that?
Sure, sure, yes, sounds good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, six. And apologize, I didn't put this in writing for the council people ahead of time, but I've been in contact with Paige Williams over the number of years, inquiring about purchasing the land north of the park. Did I miss one?
Number six.
You know, I did not get the right, you're looking, you're looking wrong. But anyway, I've been working with Paige Williams about possibly buying it, because a lot of people are parking clear out the old football field and walking through the old football field, cleared the sports complex. And Paige said he'd be willing to sell this land to the city, asking prices high, fifty-five thousand. Ash and I talked to Chip and said we couldn't tip the project, and you wanna explain that, Ash?
Has the soil been tested?
I just don't wanna get into a, yeah, I just don't wanna get into a position where if DNR or somebody finds out and we didn't test that soil over there, and it becomes into a bigger expense.
I should go back to the seller.
Huh?
I should go back to the seller.
And it should, but I'm asking that we make sure the soil be tested before we start thinking about it.
Now, I, can you say why, because I'm unaware of why we need to, I just feel me on a light, we need to guess.
Well, there was some stuff over there, was there not?
I, I don't know.
Matt?
It's always up to the buyer to do their due diligence, so.
Yeah, but that's, there, what was there, there was something there, the soil.
Bob, can you answer that, what, on Paige Williams' property, what used to be there, is this a railroad facility?
Well, the last real commercial use was the elevator, had that land for a while, and had temporary bins up for corn. And when the athletic complexes were developed, the development corporation gave that land, and the elevator gave, elevator gave a little bit more, and evidently Paige ended up with the rest of that. But long ago, there was railroad properties on there, but, you know, they pulled out in eighteen ninety-eight, this is twenty twenty-two, let's roll.
Okay, you wanna explain the deal, Ash?
Yeah, we'll work this way, we're gonna advance money from the general fund to buy this land. And then you will get the money in here twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, so that advance will take some money from the general fund, we have to appear that. And then you have to amend the open new, and tonight you are moving the whole, so you gotta do it again, because it will be another cost. So it's just a matter, we need to have the council appear to go through it, and it's with a cost, you will be reimbursed by the year twenty twenty-four.
Can, can we figure out this, this testing, this soil testing, for any portion of any part?
Yes.
And make sure, I don't know, if it's on the seller, on the buyer, or whatever, I just think that we really need to test the soil before we get ourselves into something.
We should, we would include doing our due diligence, as Matt said, in.
Have the city attorney, right, draw up a purchase agreement.
Is there any?
But I would like specifically for the soil to retest it, that's what I'm asking, I don't want that to go under the table, I want the soil tested.
Sure, is there any plan, I mean, is it just to use it, is it gonna be additional parking?
Well, that's what, parking, I don't think there's enough room for add on more fields, I don't know, but right now, if you go out there Saturday, Sunday, that place is absolutely.
Okay, sure, sure, so parking right now may be the most of the future.
And Brandy says, with the new development, where James and Dolly live, more students coming in, our soccer program's gonna grow. I think now's the time to take the land, because otherwise, land is whoever might take it, then we're not wanting to have any parking.
So, how are we gonna surface it?
Well, right now, it's gravel, and that's what Brandy's.
Will we have to add more gravel to it?
Yes.
I think it kind of leads into, I don't think we have a great solution, budget wise, for parks, as it is now already.
Well, I talked to Ash, I talked to Chip, we've got money available, next January, we need to increase the budget. Chip says we got money to do this, I mean, five thousand dollars isn't near enough to handle parks, we added the scout park and everything else, we're gonna add park out the new housing development. We've got an increasing budget, you got all this money coming in from new houses, Ash doesn't know what the revenue is from all the businesses yet coming in.
No, I, I agree, it's just, it's something, I, I know the money's a big issue.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, but, you know, this is a quality of life thing that people look for, and again, you just go back, and you go to other towns, you look at their complexes, you know? You know, the ones that are not in very good shape, you don't see many people at, the ones that are in pretty decent sheet, shape, that's where the people go.
And my daughter asked how much money would. And my daughter asked how much money we made on the aquatic center, and I laughed, I said, we don't, but we're drawing in the alleys.
Oh, I believe.
I think it's a great idea, I just, I really wanna make sure that soil's okay, so we don't get ourselves into something bigger.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, it's, there's like trees or shrubs or something.
Well, they must cut down, we'll cut down a lot of trees on Paige's property already, the mulberry trees and things.
So, if we slow down the idea to mine.
Yeah.
We will.
Talk about it.
For, I, I always like to keep the, the council fully informed that there will be a lot of costs to start with, and that will be taken from the reserve money. And then we'll be reimbursed in twenty twenty-four. So, among these costs is all what we're talking about, there might be testing things that needs to be done, there might be, uh, issue that we don't know, there will, we are all part of study. I just want the council to be aware that we're gonna go through that, tonight, all we need is, do you like the idea to start with? So we can start on these things, because I can give that stuff to the one that told me, and he can tell me no, he can't do it. And we'll understand that stuff, even working on certain issues with the one that told me. So, but I can go the one that told me now unless the council tell me yes, see what I mean? Because I have to take it to me and start to check on the soil testing, just start to check on the availability of the farm, when am I gonna get it? How much it gonna cost for the open new one, for the purchase price, the mail can to, to major, try to make you check the price, all these things. So, how do you feel?
Um, so, think about it this way, remember when we, when we passed, uh, and discussed the funding and stuff for the phase four? We didn't get any money, we didn't spend any money, but it gets the things going, and we could, it's like a preapproval.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, it's like a preapproval.
Yeah, and that's what I want, just kind of tell me where you wanna go with it, and I will take it from there, because.
If we can possibly maybe do some upgrades with this list, can we tie this all together?
Absolutely, you hit my mind, because I need this going out of time.
So, this could tie in with. With James and Dick and you and Pat and Jim on coming up with an action plan, they can tie it all together.
Yes. That's what I have in mind, talking to them, is if we go slow with it now, I think these are bumping, this are.
And just be mindful, you know, we don't know what kind of junk is sitting out there as far as nails, anything. If we have to resurface that, if you're gonna buy a thousand ton of rock, you're in between twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Sure.
Yes. It's all.
It's gonna be a lot of money, dude.
Do it in phase, phase is what you can.
But if anything has come out of pelvis or anything else has gotten that ground, you're looking at millions to decontaminate it.
That's a good idea, yes, to answer your question, yes, I would entertain that, yes.
Yes, it's a great idea.
Okay, so let's proceed with that.
I, I would make, if you make a motion to do that, you know.
Second, I'll second, second by Dolly, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Okay, now, seven, since the current cemetery contract, the motion was made, and it didn't go long enough for months.
I remember.
For Josh to finish that, so I told Ash to figure out roughly what it is per month, so we could add that on, so he could finish for this year.
Four thousand four hundred sixteen dollars sixty-seven cents.
I, I moved to do that, because I made the motion, was pointed out that my math was wrong after we passed it, so, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, moved in second, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Upstate.
Kaba?
Yes.
And one quick thing, while we're talking about cemetery, I drove out there and I'm counting a hundred to a hundred fifty stones that need repaired out there. I talked to Ash, I've been trying to get money every year to do this, increase the budget, but Mike Johnson said if we would buy the mortar mix, he would start on this project. Uprising the stones, and seemed like every few months ago out there, there's more stones toppled, just naturally. They're big, heavy, and just wait, top them up, and to me, it's one of the worst cemeteries around, as far as the number of stones that are toppled over. So, if the council would agree with supplying the concrete for Mike Johnson, then he would start setting the stones.
Now, can we do that? Because it's not on here.
We can put along that gym next year.
You just, okay, so you throw me that as an idea we can think about, okay, good.
Where do we sit on the platting of that, of the, on the Norse cemetery, the council approved like eleven thousand dollars?
The Lord V and K, did they already get done?
For the smoke.
So they're currently working on it, okay.
They're still, they're still working.
Yeah, they're, they're working, okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Please, okay, it's gonna get easier now.
Hopefully.
They're all actually.
Ash, uh, who's on the gallium?
Ten minutes?
Public, I opened the public hearing right now, did you receive any advice? Any comments, concerns, general public? Close the hearing, B ordinance, number twenty-two oh six C.
Motion.
A motion, I'll move. Move by second, second by Morgan, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Okay, nine.
Who are we?
Oh, we have the ordinance, okay, okay. Need motion.
For the second, wait for the second.
Okay. Moved in second, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Need motion to move. Second, Kaba, second by Morgan, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Okay, nine, urban renewal plan amendment, public hearing, I opened it, uh, did you receive any?
No.
Comments, concerns, general public, close the public hearing, resolution number twenty-two thirty-five C. Approving the urban renewal plan.
So moved.
Second by Renzo, second by Kaba, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Ten, development agreement with Central Iowa Collegiate, the L O C, this time open the public hearing, do you receive any?
No.
Comments, general public?
No.
Close the public hearing, B, resolution number twenty-two thirty-six C, approving the development agreement. Moved, moved by Kaba, right by Morgan, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Eleven? Eleven development agreement with S M K holding, this time open the public hearing, do you receive any?
No.
Comments, concerns?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, why?
Um, is, is this the ice cream store?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, and forgive me, I was, I was trying to read through this, is this, is this covering, because they have the old Quinn building, is that right? Is that, is this gonna be used for both of those?
No.
So they could come back and ask for more money for the other store at some point, right?
Yes.
Did we ever, well, obviously we didn't, I was gonna say, has there, were they ever approached to say, you know, you gotta use half and half or something or like that?
No, no, the, the old standard is that they can have one, uh, TIF agreement per address. Per address.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
They purchased that at a later date, too.
What's that?
They, they purchased them.
Right.
Because she came to the council and asked for an extension on the old Quinn building?
Yeah, I just said, no, you know, I don't think there was a time in the past where, you know, we gave TIF money to one, and then if they came back for another business that we gave it to them. You know, I didn't know if it would be better to have it split, but we didn't do that, so.
So, and then she had also itemized out what she was using that funds, those funds for, so if we would have done something like that hypothetically. She would have obviously been asking for more then, so, she only asked for that not to cover the business for what she was doing on that building. And she's already complied and got everything done, she, so she's way ahead of it.
Any other discussion then?
Thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing, B, resolution number twenty-two thirty-seven C.
So moved.
Moved by Renzo.
Second.
Dolly, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Twelve, Joyce Sixx, finally Warren, sorry for the delay.
I think Joyce has spoken to some of you, and, and Bob Cook has, uh, taken you out to view of the property that Joyce is contemplating. Gifting to the city, uh, on the condition that it be used as a public green space. I, uh, explained that in the, the letter that I submitted with the, our request to be on the agenda. I apologize if, if you got the attachments in black and white, um, they're, they're virtually unreadable, black and white. If you would like it in color, or if anybody, okay, it is color, all right, I was, I was concerned that, uh, you might be able to, but if any member of the public would like colored copies of the maps. Um, my email is at the top of the letter, and, and just shoot me an email, I will send you a copy of those maps. And I visited briefly with the city attorney, Duane Daleen, uh, to give him a heads up about this, he was not aware of this. That I would like, uh, preapproval, as, as Mike Kaba likes to call it. And a direction to the city attorney to negotiate with me on behalf of the, actually, two entities own the property, her late husband's trust and, and Joyce each own. And have, and they're two parcels, she hasn't decided precisely how she would like to do this, and of course, uh, the city will surely want to do some due diligence. At, at a minimum, I would think you would want the, the abstract examined, um, to make sure that, that, uh, you're getting free title and, and no liens or, uh. Incumbrances that, that we. If, if you're interested in, in acquiring this green space, but as I explained in the letter, I think this is a quality of life issue, I mean, it's already green space. But there's no guarantee that it would remain green space, all of us come to, or try in our lives when we contemplate what's gonna happen to the assets that. We're giving stewardship of during our life, and, and Joyce has decided that, that this will be appropriate, uh, both, uh. And recognition of the, the stewardship that she and her husband have also the many generations before, and would serve as a, a way of, uh. Benefiting the, the community and, and reminding others of that. So I have some action items there, unless you had questions about what I submitted, um, what I would like is, uh. Particularly with respect to her property is a direction to the city attorney to negotiate with me on behalf of the donors, uh. About terms for accepting the gift, he would have to draft a resolution that he would have to accept, uh, or approve in order to accept a, a conditional gift. And also, we would need to make, um, changes to the comprehensive plan for this to work, and while I was on the issue of green space, I, I also added, uh. That there are other things that I would like the, uh, planning and zoning commission to address while they're, they're looking at the comprehensive plan. Way back, I, I assisted with the, the drafting of that, and the time that that was approved, we did not have the current, uh, twenty-twenty census numbers, and. Among other things, I wanted to amend the comprehensive plan to include our new census number that just showed that we are in fact a growing community. We also need to, uh, update the comprehensive plan, currently, the comprehensive plan has the land that would be the phase four development, is agricultural, obviously, that needs to be residential. Uh, there are other, uh, changes we need to make to that, and as part of that phase four, uh, housing plan, at, at least as, uh. Initially preapproved by the city council in April, includes a street, uh, from northeast, second street down to White Pole Road. Because of the city's, uh, or the school's soccer field, or practice field, uh, that street is gonna have to lie on Tippin's property. Tippin's property is currently outside of city, city limits, so I would like the council to, uh. Have the comprehensive plan, uh, zone outside, uh, or not zone, but make it part of the, uh, future land use, uh, extend beyond the boundary. Uh, of the city, which would allow the city to zone outside of city limits, which they're allowed to do. For obvious reasons, I mean, it doesn't do much good for the city to have, uh, a residential, uh, zoning neighborhood on the edge of town if, uh. Right across their backyard, somebody can put up a rendering plant or something like that.
Warren, how far off can you go?
You can go out two miles, and that's not to say that we would have to, or it would even be prudent to, um. My thought to, and I, I, and I would volunteer on behalf of the seat to work with planning and zoning on this, but, but my thought would be to look at the joining landowners, you know, and. You know, if, if they all, if they join a landowner that's only a quarter mile deep, then, then only go that deep, you know, you don't need to go out two miles. Because I can tell you, if, if you try to zone out two miles, you'll get a room full of angry farmers in here. So, um, and it's particularly important in the Derrick County, because the Derrick County does not have countywide zoning, Guthrie County, they have countywide zoning, we would have to work with the county on any zoning outside of city limits, but. Those are the action plans, uh, or action points that I, I requested in my letter, uh, that can be a single motion or two motions, however you would like to do it. That's what I'm asking for, any questions?
No, I, I, I know, I went out there with Bob and took a tour of, like, you know, and, uh, what a generous thing to do for this, for the city, you know, and. The only thing that I saw in here is, you know, it, it looks like the family made a suggestion on the name, uh, I, I just think, you know, it should, uh, reflect, uh. Donator's name and have, maybe instead of Sturt area, Heritage Park, make it Hicks Heritage Park, uh, to let everybody know where the generosity came from. And maybe they can thank the family down the road, that would be my thing, everything else in here, uh, I, I think is fine, but, you know, it's up to, up to the council.
Warren, do you think we, we need to refer this to our city attorney?
Yeah, that's the item number one.
So, can I make the motion to proceed with action items A one and two, and action items B one, two, and three?
Okay. Okay.
And I'm not gonna repeat them, Warren has set them up very nicely, you know?
And we refer you to the city.
Yeah, that's what is.
Okay, yeah, doing the motion, you have a second?
Yeah.
Second, with my Kaba, how you doing, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
Now, I'm just, I'm gonna throw in one extra comment, I, I know the, the issue of cost has, has come up, particularly with, uh, respect to parks and recreation. And, and that sort of thing, and I think this is a, a, a donation that the city could probably leverage in terms of when they're applying for grants as a, as a. Item from the city, uh, the other thing, which I, I expect now we'll probably talk about is, you know, we had a commercial enterprise, uh, approach us about, uh. Running, uh, tournaments out of our recreation facilities, and, uh, C adopted not to do that because of the cost involved. But we're, we're very interested in the idea, and I think there is potential there to, uh, if we upgrade our, our parks and recreation facilities to, to generate some revenue that would help pay for those improvements. And certainly upfront, TIF is an excellent, excellent, growth, the, the houses that we're putting in, uh, with Quick Start coming in. We're gonna have an opportunity to use TIF funds, um, that's not to say that that, that money should just be frittered away, but that's, that's an available, an available investment if we spend wisely. As I think we have up till now, uh, we've been using TIF, uh, since at least twenty fourteen, Ash has done an excellent job with that. And it's consistently, uh, lowered our, our, it's increased property values and lowered our tax rate.
Russ said he couldn't be here, he shot me a message, and I relayed it to Ash. He, well, I think what he's asking is if the city could assist in paying, I think it's roughly two forty to two fifty for eight hours of security for P D. And what he asked, what he relayed to me was that he's asking for one-time fee for this first year, so that way they can get off R B T V and start to build funds for every year. I think when he told me at R B T V, there's like eleven different teams coming in this year, and we'll start getting more and more, but he didn't know if the city could help pay for that security cost. It's thirty bucks an hour for eight hours.
How many, do we know how many is on the team, I mean, it wasn't, I, I don't.
So if the security is from nine P M. So the security is from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So somebody has to sit there with the smokers at night.
So the teens are not going to sit there on the smokers?
No, they have to provide security. So there would be an officer, I would think, or I don't know how that works. But I think it was an officer...
Chris do it. I think a couple... I think Chris did it a couple years ago.
He said it was 30... Last time he checked, it was $30 an hour for eight hours. And he was just asking for one year, this first year help so they can get on their feet.
Is this the first time they've done it?
Well...
Was there another one a few years ago, please?
We have one a couple of years ago, but then COVID killed it for two years. So this is actually would be our second one. But the whole intent of it is, like, the deadline was September 1st and he just handed me more money for registration. So there was 11 of them now. And basically, we don't want to keep coming to hotel motel tax. We want to be able to fund our own best of the block.
And that would guarantee that the officer is going to be at that spot for eight hours, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Warren.
Do you have a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
What about Renzo?
Not to exceed $250.
I think this is something that they hope to, this is a one-time thing, hopefully.
Hopefully, it's a one-time fee.
Because you'll know kind of move forward...
In the past, we had enough money and donations to do it, but it was our first time and it's a learning curve for all of us.
Well, sorry, you need to see...
Second, okay. Adi Gothelli?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Enzo?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Okay. Scott Avi put a request in to increase his rates. He's not here, we could call him if we need to. But I think he's done an excellent job for us. The other day when I cleaned up Burger King, I called him and I said I got 20 bags of trash out here. He picked them up charging the facility the fees.
So this is the first year where for the rest of the year, you tend to see a big bump, and then the next year it's like 50 bucks.
And I asked him about, since we don't recycle plastic anymore, he says the weight isn't there, but the volume's there.
But he said that there's, I mean, the big change and the difference is we have 125 more garbage accounts.
Right.
So it's not like we're just bumping it up to bump it up. We have more people, we're going to have a new addition, so it's going to be more...
More traction.
Yeah.
And when RV TV came through, I asked him if he would pick up all the garbage and just charge back to the customers. You can get stickers to put on, but if they're over two 33-gallon bags, then he went ahead and he said extra $75 charge to the customers on Thursday to pick up the extra trash.
Oh, you're talking about...
For residential. And I recommend going with this.
Thinking long-term, throwing it out there. Do we have a plan if something, if Avi was not to do our trash? Do we have a backup plan?
Because doesn't Dexter use pancakey?
I mean, that's not something to just, I'm just throwing that out there long-term.
I remember, I didn't know how many people, or you couldn't get it around here.
Yeah, that's the same concept I had. We always, you know, there's a bland B, but we never, 29 years of...
Well, I'm not saying we have to use it, I'm just thinking long-term. I mean, this guy's not going to live forever.
All the dumpsters, these supplies and that.
We always bland B.
Picks up everyone for free.
Maybe just thinking long-term at some point.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What about Renzo?
Second.
Second, but Patrick, Adi Gothelli?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
15 code enforcement fees, restrictive covenants. Jason, thank you for being patient. I'll be fast, I promise.
I'm sorry, can I try to... I was going to do on the festive barbecue. I set these forms out for you to look at. Is there something that people can look at? These are for street closures and then we can put on the agenda for next month? Just this, I had a business owner approach me about the closures and I think we just, some forms and is that something we can put on the agenda for next month?
Yes.
Sorry, Jason, I'm sitting here and I forgot about it.
Yes. Jason Ben Ossol, representing Iowa Code Enforcement Committee. We want to, I mean, code enforcement at its core is confrontational. We always want to create an era of treating everybody absolutely fair and equal at all times. Mayor's got strong shoulders. If the mayor let his property get into disarray and become a nuisance, I'm going to enjoy writing him a letter. Max is going to be on it, no doubt about it. And Max doesn't know anybody in town and everybody gets treated the same. I think that you all know that. We've also had a few meetings to kind of create a better understanding. And I'm here to tell you that I believe we've actually kind of gotten over a hurdle recently. And I think things are moving along. One of the pieces that I wanted to bring to you tonight was what was a source of contention to your last code enforcement person, Ed Liedem. I talked about it. This is in your ordinance, and this is why I'm here tonight, is to ask you for an amendment to this ordinance. Ordinance number 21-03C. And this is the section number five. This is your restrictive covenants out in the new addition on the Womboldt areas out there. What does that mean? Laying it all on the table, if you have, one of you or all of you have your RVs sitting in your driveway, no harm about. If you have an RV out there, as this is written, if we got a complaint or if Max is out there doing proactive code enforcement, you would be having a special set of rules, restrictive covenants, paid for by the rest of the taxpayers of the community to write them a letter. That is, at its essence, not fair. The Womboldt addition area out there has covenants. I'm the building official for my day job, Sir Greenstring Kim, and we have a variety of communities with numerous housing developments, developers that have their own restrictive covenants. Has nothing to do with the city. What I'm asking you for tonight is to strike that from that ordinance, number five, so that they, the residents that live out there in that area, can either enforce them or not enforce them. Has nothing to do with the city. That's what I'm asking for.
So I think we had that discussion a while ago. I remember talking that, Jesus, I'm going to lose my thought. We were talking about putting this on there. And some people, I can't remember who said it, but it was like, well, we'd leave it up to the people that live out there to enforce it. It'd have to be like neighbor and neighbor. And really, what should have happened, there should have been a homeowners association made of this. I can guarantee you 100%, they're not going to start a homeowners association out there. I mean, I don't know if anybody that would. That's just my guess, and that's up to them.
That's up to them, yeah.
That's strongly my guess, yes. So, and I know we had our city attorney look at this and amend that. He felt that we were well within our rights, I guess, or you know, whatever, how do you want to say it, to amend that, to put that on there. And I get it, it's unfair, you know, because us as taxpayers are paid to write you guys up, you know. But is there any other... There's really no other solution other than them starting a homeowners association or...
Or just becoming part of the city. I mean, they would disagree, they would be treated absolutely the same as everybody else.
So they could have campers and trailers in New York.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was a couple of things on this. Code enforcement fees, restrictive covenants. I'm going to circle back to the fees. You said that you had some multiple meetings. I, first of all, would like to ask, I know that we've got over this hurdle, from what I understand, but Jason and Max... That costs $200 that I would like to see paid outside of their monthly fee because it is not fair to them or the citizens that they were required to come out here to have a meeting with Ash and the mayor and have a non-city employee, non-elected official on to have that meeting. That meeting should have happened with us, if anything. That is not okay. Their contract says works directly under the supervision of a single staff person. So I would like to, first of all, make a motion to pay them $200 outside of their monthly fee because that's not fair to them or the citizens to have to pay that extra fee out of their monthly cost.
Who set up the meeting? Because I'm not...
Your guess is as good as mine, I have no idea. I just know that there was somebody on the phone, I'm not going to name names, but there was a non-elected official, non-city person on the phone in this meeting with Jason, Max, the mayor, and Ash.
What was the meeting for?
Jason?
The meeting was to address item number one in the contract. So that we have a single city staff person that is our point of contact for all communication for code enforcement. And that had been not happening for quite a long time. And through that meeting, which was a really good meeting, we were able to come up with a plan on how to address that and how to move forward so that all parties involved got the communication for code enforcement.
So, do you know how the meeting came about?
I was instructed to come to the meeting.
Okay. I...
It was, I recall that meeting.
Yeah.
It was about the procedure that we used. And I think we adjusted some of that procedure because the mayor was concerned about being notified about the Blackfoot, the issues and stuff. The city attorney usually noted hard, the city hall was at the buses.
Right.
So we weren't getting that, now we adjusted.
So we had a final notice at Burger King. And I'm usually the one that has to go ahead and say, well, here's the final notice, we're going to clean it up. Well, it was sent out September 1st and now the 11th was the 10 days. But I did get a notice the other day on it. So just a little lack of communication, we're trying to work together.
It was a good meeting, so... It was a very good meeting. So prior to the meeting, you didn't have this, the single person?
No, no, it wasn't planned, I think the mayor was like...
And then you kind of caught up, so it was just...
But they were getting, they were getting followed, okay, now we're sugarcoating it. I, no, I'm just, I'm telling you. When we raised the fees, and I don't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, but when we raised the fees, I said to Jason, I am concerned that their time is getting used by others that shouldn't be having communication with them because they're supposed to be communicating with City Hall. There's a form online. I had a problem with one of my neighbors and some weeds that were hitting our truck. I went on to the website, I filled out the form, I emailed it to Sarah. Sarah takes it from there. Other people are calling Jason and Max and saying, hey, this is a property, this problem, this problem. That's using up their time and their, and our resources by taking and having all those phone calls. They're not able just to go out and enforce to everybody. Having to deal with certain things, certain people. And that's not fair to the rest of these people. So then the meeting came about and, yeah, it's good now. I'm just saying, I don't think it's fair that we have to use $200 of our monthly allowance of, I think it's $1,000 now because they were requested to come out to this meeting that was unnecessary.
So you just see that reflected, it itemized on your bill for $200 extra? If that's okay with the council?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm proposing, is that we pay it above the thousand. It's not, it's not their fault that they had to come out here for this meeting. And for me, it's not so much the meeting with the mayor, it's the extra person on the phone that was uncalled for. So I'm just, I'm asking that the $200 be on top of the thousand so they can pay for code enforcement like they're supposed to every month as a one-time fee. And the restrictive covenants, I mean, for me, I agree, I don't think it's right. If they, if they want it enforced, then they can...
Enforce it, not enforce it.
You guys can form a homeowners association like everybody else. I mean, the city isn't the ones that implemented those restrictions and those covenants. We're not the ones that asked for them, we didn't implement them, we didn't record them. That's not on us, and we should have paid...
There was letters sent out to certain individuals here this last couple weeks at the new house.
Yes.
Because it's in here right now.
Right. We just want to be fair, honestly, we just want to be equal across the board to everybody.
Right, because if it's here right now, it needs to be done.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah, I would just, I would love to see a motion to amend the 21-03C to strike restrictive covenants enforcement from the city books.
If we go through that, are you going to read the letter and tell them it's not a thing anymore?
If you desire, absolutely.
What's your next take on that?
Well, can we...
Be happy to do that.
I get what you're saying, and I totally understand it because we had this discussion, you know, and it, some people go, well, this, and this, and this. I'm just trying to, there just really isn't a way to have it on there. I was going to say, can we check with...
Yes, it has to be done by ordinance. They have to amend that ordinance. So next meeting, we can give you a new ordinance to amend that.
To take it out?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
If we said, agree with what the council... So the council has to agree on that, I'll take it to the city attorney tomorrow. Ask them to amend it.
Can I make a motion to approve the $200 above the monthly allowance and to refer it to the attorney to take it out?
Okay, do you have a second?
Of course, I mean, everyone out there has the same rules across the board, the city.
Is that what, that's what I'm saying?
Yeah, they just want everybody to be fair.
So there's where my misunderstanding was, is we take it off to them one, you know? But we fall, so they fall under the same... Exactly.
But it's up to the homeowners out there, if they want to go ahead and enforce the camper in the trailers.
Exactly.
And salaries, when people moved in and said, no, I'm not going to have a camper next to me. And then said, well, now I have one.
Yep.
It's up to them guys to decide.
That's correct.
And if they want to enforce the designation, then so be it, but that's on them. And if they want to charge fees, if they don't want to charge fees, however that works, that's not on us.
I'm just going to ask, since I drafted the restrictive covenants, I...
Right.
I think it's obligated to...
Speak up.
We, as part of developing a new development... Do this legal here. As part of doing the new development, we included restrictive covenants as a way to make the property development more uniform. That's typically why a developer will do that. And so we put in things in there like, you know, we require a certain roof pitch so that things don't look like sheds, you know. And we require that there be stone or brick on the front so that it has a solid look to it and things of that nature. So we try to put, and we've tweaked them a little. If you live in different phases out there, you will notice that there are differences between the phases. We could, there are developers that will start right out of the gate with a homeowners association. But that's a whole new level of bureaucracy. You have to have a board for a homeowners association similar to a city council. And you've probably witnessed some of the trouble that Diamond Head Lake is essentially a homeowners association has had. Just keeping the machinery of the entity going. So we didn't want to impose that, but has been said by Jason and several council members here. The responsibility, I mean, if you bought a house there because of those restrictive covenants appealed to you, then it's your obligation to preserve that right. If it bothers you that somebody has their travel trailer sitting in their driveway nine months out of the year, you can enforce that covenant. They will stay in place for 21 years. After that, they automatically sunset unless somebody, it only takes one, somebody out there renews them, you can renew them for another 21 years and then that's it, you're done. So, and I agree with the idea that this be taken out. I had real questions about whether this ordinance was even enforceable. Because these covenants were put in place to establish a quality of life. They weren't necessarily to establish what is a nuisance to one's neighbor. You know, it's a nuisance to Christina if the weeds on the neighbor are so bad that they're scratching up her vehicle when she pulls out of the driveway. If there's a travel trailer sitting on her neighbor's driveway, that isn't necessarily a nuisance that we want to pay code enforcement to enforce. So that's why that's there. If it bothers James's neighbor, if James is bothered by that travel... If it bothers James's neighbor, if James is bothered by that travel trailer over there, out there, or the pool that's above ground, you know, if that looks trashy and second-class to you, you can bring in action, just like the city council would have to. If they have a violation and it's not resolved, you know, they would have to go to court. Well, the individual can do that. And I had somebody coming in and complaining about CED on enforcing the restricted covenants. Well, the only people that can enforce the restricted covenants are landowners. So as long as the developer still has lots, we can enforce them. And we do that in terms of the covenants that apply to the requirements for the homes. We enforce those with the initial build-out. But once all the lots are gone, like in Womboldt First, we don't have any say there, CED doesn't own any property in Womboldt First Edition. So that's, that's the size of it.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to have a motion.
So that's, we're only talking the nuisance part and code enforcement.
When we're talking about code enforcement, you know, if I'm switching hats to V and K, we would actually only enforce your building codes at V and K anyway. I believe CED takes care of your roof pitch and all those other stuff, is that a true statement?
Yeah.
And the fencing and all that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, well, I think fencing is in the code.
Yeah, we, you're gonna be just like, uh, on the rants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, but no special fencing for the covenants, no restricted covenant?
There isn't, yeah.
Is there?
There is a restricted covenant on the type of fencing, and that has become.
Black chain link fence.
That, yeah.
So that would go away, that would go away?
No, no, for you guys it would go away, it's still a restricted covenant. If somebody puts up a privacy fence, you know, the idea behind the chain link fence is people like a suburban neighborhood where you got a broad vista, you can see the trees in the background and everything. And if everybody's putting a privacy fence, you know, all of a sudden it was like, okay. That's, that's the theory behind the restricted covenant. If somebody puts up a privacy fence because they have an autistic child, say, and none of the neighbors complain, it's not a problem.
I understand, but if we go through this, the next person that buys out there, if there's no fence, could put up a, up to eight-foot, as far as your current state does.
As far as he's concerned, but the neighbor could still say, you're not applying with restricted covenants.
Right, and they could take action against them, or if.
But if it doesn't bother anybody, then.
Or if it was in someplace where CED owned property, then CED would enforce it, right? Is that what you said?
We could.
You could, not would, could, they could enforce it. Still enforceable, but just not, they're not gonna do it.
A motion on the floor to approve the $200 extra this month as a one-time deal for the fees and to refer the change of their ordinance to the city attorney to amend it.
I'll wait for your second.
Second, uh, Morgan, how do you go? Yes, Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason, I just wanna tell you that we did have a final notice from the lawyers on the Burger King property. I can go in and clean up the west side. I can board up the window that's open, but I can't put barricades on yet. Mitch is working on between Casey's and Burger King. I don't know if you had that, but written notice from them that we can put a barricade so semi's can't get in there.
But even on the city right-of-way that the city owns?
Well, he says it's between Casey and, Casey's and Burger King, they own it, but I don't know.
That road would have a right-of-way, owned by the city.
So far close to the road, we could do it that.
Yeah.
On top of.
Yeah, there's more ways to get in that gap. Yeah, yeah, and that's all charged back to the property owners?
Yeah.
Yes, even your time?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I already talked to Jim, he said he could possibly take the skidload and jump, put it in Abby's dump suit and back charge, it looks great, thank you.
Amazing.
Somebody built their moment tonight.
Really?
I think they mow it, they just don't take care of the ditches, that's the biggest part. And so when the city went in and cleaned out the ditches, it's been really trashy because all the junk goes in there. Is there somebody living in the weeds in a tent?
There was.
There used to, there was.
There was?
Yes.
He worked with.
They come from Atlantic with a wagon and a tent and a sleeping bag. They dumped them off from Atlantic Stewart and said, you can stay here at Burger King. Katie says, no, you can't.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's why I gotta go. All right, quit, quit the bathroom break.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks for the first question, I appreciate it.
Mark, you can be right home.
I'm not staying, I'm leaving.
Would you get a ride home next to you?
Oh, I got you, I think it's.
I've gotta get home.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It was all can feed in. You can go down there and. I was just kinda telling you some secrets when I used to hide my beer down there.
Those are my ears.
Yeah, I used to hide my beer down there. There was one tall root there. With that string. Beer.
I think somebody else told me they did that too. Thanks, Mark.
Digger did not have that.
You've been downloading their hair.
The wolf gets you down there. She would.
Okay, are we going to the bathroom or we standing? Because I really don't wanna be here all night.
We just wait till some minute.
Okay.
For Patrick, I'm getting thirsty.
Me too.
Me three.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Okay, 16, Matt?
Oh, right, submitted my report, you guys have everybody's love.
No, sir.
Then the only thing I'm gonna say is that RV TV was, I think, a big success.
Amazing.
I just wanna say, took this opportunity to say, we probably had about 25 volunteers that all met once a week for the last three months. So, thank you to all the volunteers, and I'd just like you to thank them also. Anytime you see anybody that you may know that been on the. Still, just a senior was part of that as well, so.
Lisa.
Yeah, so, but it took a lot of people, and a lot of people really stepped up. And I think it was a big success, we got some positive news coverage out of it. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody, thank you for your cooperation and Christina too. Thank you for your extra time with them as well, and all the other volunteers. That's it, if you don't have any other questions, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, Matt, do you know how many people were there? I mean, it was massive.
Some people were, I think, in 3,000.
Yeah, we had great news coverage that morning about how great they, they acted, they said that we acted like we'd already had it before without even having it, and they were very impressed.
Yeah.
Okay, 17, Matt reached out to the chamber, beggars' night, October 31st. Downtown, five to seven, residential, six days are the hours.
Do you need anything with that motion?
No.
Don't do your just comments.
Okay, just tell me. 18, new fire truck change order.
That's, yes, file has the change order around 9,000 or so. And that was considered in the financial, the child, the new child. Normally, it was any change order we submitted to the council. So we informed that. If the council has any question, we'd like to answer it, otherwise we need a motion.
I do move that. I'm listening, but I'll move it if something wants seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, go to the second, so how do you go? Dolly?
Yep.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Okay, 19, annual fiscal reports.
Like the annual financial rule that I usually have to include the fiscal, I have to have that included, I have to publish it, I have to send it to the state office. We need a motion.
Come on.
Second, go to the second, how do you go? Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Okay, urban review or reverse?
Yeah, reverse, I have to do, this is just, not just finance, it's just a gift issue. And all the attachments, all controlled, but it has to be submitted to the state, it will be in the same time.
So.
Second.
Second, how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Okay, 21.
I would like, I asked for this last month, and I think it would be a very good, I mean, Cory and I attended the last training that she did, and she was amazing. So the Marquita, I mean, I think it would be very, very beneficial for us to have this.
Now, Aish, I know when I started three years ago, they, I don't know who puts it on, I don't know if it's Iowa League of Cities or something, but they have classes that we can attend, and the city pays for us to go to those, is that correct? Is that something that's in those classes, something like this?
Yes, yes. It's kinda, co-concession is very well explained in the city college, we can make copies, it's everybody. I think, I don't know, it's not gonna cost a lot of money, it's something that we threw out that turmoil that we had. I think Christina was trying to help.
But I think it's a good training for us all to have, to realize what's really going on, because.
It's not a bad idea, that's just it. My thing is, is, you know, the city, or there's also classes on that, is there any cost difference from going to like the Iowa League of Cities thing or to this?
But that's during the week, I can't take, I don't have time to take off from work, and I don't wanna do like that.
I have to wait, you have to wait until we make it available.
Okay.
This one, it will come when our time is available, then.
Okay, yeah, and I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta. The whole logic, the whole subject. Christina's trying for help to get more information about co-concession. It's not gonna cost a lot of money, it will be good if they can.
Well, yeah, I'll let you move it, but I would also say, I would like to see us live stream this. Because it's gonna be open, because I asked about the pioneering zone, because I couldn't make it, and I sold, no, nothing, I'd live stream it. And I don't know if that information is available from that.
We'll check it.
Because I think she said she had something, you know? But I'd like to get that, because I couldn't, so I, as long as we, if we're gonna do this, let's utilize that technology and broadcast it maybe more citizens who are interested and understand what you have, so.
We can do that.
So I'd be all for it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. Okay, I'll second it.
Go second, okay, how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Okay, 22, Aish?
We did a lot of interviews and we see a lot of applicants and stuff. This is the joint agreement city and utility. In that particular position, there are 60% of the way from the utility, 4% from the city. And the benefit is paying by the city. We set that position before I came in here. We offer the new person that we choose, $18 per hour, and we lucky that she accepted. It means Ashley, my wife, the utility goes up with that position in the bay, and I would like to see the council.
She doesn't happen to be here, is she?
Uh, she might be watching.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, all right, also move.
Second.
Seconded, how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
How do you go?
Bee, Bee's a proffer, as we all have seen in the last two, three months. She stepped up and she stayed in that difficult position. Sarah's doing an outstanding job, she's very knowledgeable, and she ready, ready to go with the new title without even a lot of training or anything. I recommended her position, we have and have city and utility, I recommended to the utility to share 5,000, and the city will share 5,000 to promote her to that position. It's a new way that's managed close to the former. I would have shared with the council, complete her promotion to liberty clerk with $5,000 raise.
So it's split 25 and 25?
No, no, it is an authority given by. Because she makes it for time to take.
I'm so confused, just hear me out. We just went through this with Mr. Morgan, and he asked for 5 and 5, right?
Seventy-five hundred and seventy-five hundred.
Then the utility board has already approved the 5,000?
Yes, and they're just bringing her up.
To where?
To close to a mic.
That position.
Okay.
Well, we had, okay, yeah, whatever, we had the motion on our side to do the 5,000, and then increase it, because that's what Cory made. So now they went ahead and did a find out.
Their side is 5,000, or their side?
Right.
Our side, I'm promoting and I recommend to give it 5,000. So then you are.
Right, so what we got about with.
Except for Mike with a higher rate than where Sarah. Okay.
Also move, make that motion.
All seconded.
Move to the seconded, how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
23, is Forrest gonna talk on this?
No, not today. It's all.
He wants to talk.
So we can, in one vote?
One motion, this is all in the court to the utility. Then we'll, but it won't stop, yes. Just, okay, who's by the car, thank you. Who's in the car?
I'll second it.
Patrick, how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Okay, I had a few people apply for positions. Brian Belton said he would do the board of adjustment position. Angie Cap and Steve James said that they would be the P and Z position for me. And I still got, I think, an opening of historic and another P and Z.
Tell me again, Angie and who?
Steve James on the P and Z, and Brian Belton on the board of adjustment.
You get a motion?
I'll move that.
Board of adjustment and the utility board at the same time?
Yeah, it's a bubble.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just asking, I didn't, okay.
Okay, so how do you go, Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
I'm staying.
Benzo?
Yes.
Cala?
Yes.
Uh, I got one question before we go to public forum, Matt Swan, a piece of paper, was anybody gonna talk about that?
Are you talking about Matt Austin?
No, Matt.
Yeah.
Swan, Black Swan, that's his name.
That's to a, he just updated it.
Oh, he did.
Doesn't, he just updated it.
Okay, so nice, so fine. Okay, public forum then. Yes, please.
Usually I submit statistics, all kinds of stuff in your packet. I beg your forgiveness, I was busy with RV TV. But I wanted to tell you a couple of neat statistics. We've been really busy, July, we had 1,504 people enter the library. In August, it was a little down, it was 1,502. And so we are working our tails off, having programs, I'm hearing good things from the community. Just wanna put that out there, when you think about raising the library's budget. Yeah, today we had a. raising the library's budget. Yeah. Today, we had a children's health fair, of all things. We had an inflatable 16-foot bring out on the sidewalk, if anybody was wondering what that was about. And then all kinds of Guthrie County Health, Guthrie County Hospital, the dentist. We had yoga, all kinds of stuff. 72 kids showed up for that. And we had a busy day with 178 people in today. So I just wanted to give you a little short.
Thank you.
Short.
On that, no, we've been getting a lot of the reports, but the last couple of months we haven't got rescue reports. Can we remind Sean to submit those?
Anybody else on the line?
Doug.
Doug?
That'd be nice to have a report like that. Well, that's our public director.
We.
We have one.
His workload and.
Right here.
What do you guess it comes, please?
It's right here. August and September, they're working at the wastewater plant operations. They're mowing and trimming all city property. They're re-spraying the weeds.
Published on the web.
It's part of the packet, isn't it? You don't publish this? Is there something in particular that you were looking for or just in general?
We're just seeing what they do. Is that what you're under? Just.
That, that.
Yeah, just the broad spectrum of what they, a day-to-day basis or.
I can tell you, they've been working really hard on the ash trees.
They start on the streets.
Yeah, I see the signs are up on the streets.
It'd be nice for the public to.
Yeah.
Is that something that can be added into the.
I don't know.
Yeah, the tree. Yeah. And I did talk with Ash and Jim that they've got a heavy workload. We did hire a third person, but it doesn't feasibly make much sense paying high, high wages to run a mower. And Jim says, we'll see if we can hire some, somewhere else. Penora has a person in the summer for 40 hours a week. He says he's kind of hesitant about hiring an outside contractor, but he said maybe we'd hire a summer person. Plus, if they're not out for sports or whatever, after school, on the weekends, whatever, take care of some of the mower.
Is it something that you can look at? Maybe, I think Dexter contracts out all their mowing.
I mean, I would like to check, contract it out, too.
I mean, I, it might make sense to maybe looking at contracting out the mowing just to relieve some of that.
Jim says one thing you can't contract out would be the sewer plant.
Right.
And the steep areas. He said his mower slides all the time. We're gonna talk about that because it would relieve 25 hours of weeding and mowing that somebody else could be doing other projects around town. Just complex, a lot of things need to be taken care of, and they could use it.
And it's not a new idea that we've been talking about.
But we need to work on it. And I could say, I hope, I talked with Jim and Ash, and I want to talk to council. Hopefully in January, when we go with the budget, we can, and talk with Chip if we can increase these budgets. Cause like I say, Lisa, the workload she has, the street department, the parks, we need a lot more money. Says we have money available. He does.
Okay.
Are we in public forum?
Yes.
So I got a question. Speaking of Jim and everything else, when he runs with Stewart Rescue, is he on the clock for, does that come out of the streets?
If it's during the day, yes.
But the problem is, is when he runs rescue, he's not working seven till four. Those aren't his hours. He has to work six to six, which is outside of his hours. So does he get comp time for those extra hours? Or is he, I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking because I know they work, Rescue works 12-hour shifts. So if he has to cover, which he has been doing three, four times a week, it seems, he's working 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. He's having to cover those.
Which I don't want to push away anybody who volunteers for the rescue by no means, but they were just, I don't know who brought it up, but somebody's saying, well, the city of Stewart's got this workload and we need to contract. Maybe our public work director needs to go to work instead of.
Running rescue all the time.
I think there's, and I don't know anything about the rescue. Maybe there's enough rescue personnel to take his spot.
I don't think.
I don't know.
I think a while ago, he got a small increase in pay to be able to run a day-lead.
That's what.
But I think, I think right now it's being excessively used. I mean, I think he's having to take on more shifts than he should because he does have a lot of work. And, you know, when they have a call and you have to go downtown, I mean, that's two, three hours that could be taken out of his time. So, I mean, I don't, I would, my opinion, I mean, I, one day, fine, but I think these three and four days is getting a little much. And he is working 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So he's working outside of his hours on time.
No, yeah.
Oh, nice. So I don't know.
And maybe that's something that you could, you could talk to Sean and see.
Physic was supposed to.
Yeah.
To see.
Like I said, that ain't gonna push somebody away because we need that service.
So we want this problem.
Yeah. And, yeah, so I don't want to discourage that. That's not what I'm trying to say here.
And that's one reason I said, you know, to have people, don't go directly to Jim with stuff and ask him, because he is busy.
Yes.
You know, and, and, you know, I've gone to him and asked for rock before, you know, and he takes time out if he's able to do that. But if I come to you and say, hey, you know, I'd like to get some rocks and you guys coordinate.
Yes.
And he can stay doing these stuff and, you know, not have to have something else to think about.
I mean, it was young at the center.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All of us is there, huh?